Good evening and welcome to the City of Taft's Planning Commission Regular Meeting for Wednesday, February 7th, 2024 at City Hall, 209 East Kern Street in Taft, California. The City of Taft Planning Commission meetings are being held in person with full-capacity seating and are livestreamed at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot YouTube dot com forward slash user forward slash City of Taft. Public comment can be made in person and can be received per the following: Written comments may be dropped off in the Dropbox in front of City Hall; Comments may be emailed to the City Clerk at cityclerk@cityoftaft.org; Made by phone to the City Clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before the meeting. Any comments received will be read into the record. And we will be starting with the Pledge of Allegiance and, hey, Ron, would you do that today?
Sure. Rise. Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And today we have Pastor Bella Black leading us in invocation.
Heavenly Father, we come before you asking that your blessings would be with this Planning Commission. Give them wisdom that would guide them to an interactive and productive session with the resources you have given them as they set God-honoring goals for the City of Taft in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Having done the invocation and this pledge, we're ready for the roll call.
Chairman Livingston?
Present.
Vice Chair Schertz?
Present.
Commissioner Dowden?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Orin?
Here.
Here's Lynn.
Okay, we will now be moving on to item one. We do not have anybody who has signed up for Citizens' Request for Public Comments, so moving on to item two, we have the minutes from the January 17th meeting. Do I have a?
Motion.
Motion in a sec. Okay, we got a motion. A second, please.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, we're doing a roll call vote. My pardon, please.
Commissioner Orin?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Schertz?
Yes.
Chairman Livingston?
Yes. Okay, moving on to items.
Chairman Livingston, if I can, I believe Commissioner Orin would have to abstain on the vote. It is, you can. Okay.
It's okay to approve it, it's just not okay to.
I was not present.
You were present.
Yeah, I told our Assistant City Manager that's the reason the meeting was so quick.
Like seventeen minutes?
Ten. So we're going to move on to item three, which is a public hearing, Conditional Use Permit Number 2024 dash 01, first one of the year, Amor Alarte Microblading Permanent Makeup and Tattooing. Mark, please.
Thank you, Chairman Livingston. As you mentioned, item four U is a proposal by Leslie Tostado of Amor Alarte requesting approval of a Conditional Use Permit to establish a permanent makeup services and tattooing business within existing lease area of an existing unit, of an existing commercial building, on a 1.73 acre lot within the general commercial zone district located at 303 Gardner Field Road, Suite B. Commercial building is located on the southeast corner of Gardner Field Road and Highway 119. The existing surrounding land uses include the Burger King restaurant and vacant shopping center lots to the north, Highway 119 and the west side of Believers Fellowship Church to the west, vacant industrial land to the east across Enterprise Way, and the vacant Kmart building and vacant commercial land to the south. Soleil Tanning Studio is the existing business located in the tenant space of 303 Gardner Field Road, Suite B. Soleil will rent out a lease area within their business unit to Ms. Tostado for the Amor Alarte business to provide microblading permanent makeup services and tattooing. The permanent makeup and tattooing offered is considered body art per the Kern County Health Department and a permit from their department will be required as well. Tattooing services within the City of Taft require Conditional Use Permit in all commercial zone district areas. Ms. Tostado has provided a letter outlining the details of the proposed business. It's included in your staff reports. The tattooing services will be small body artwork. The business hours will be Tuesday through Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Fridays from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m., and Saturdays by appointment only. That's included in the information in the letter as well. There are no significant changes or ten improvements proposed by the applicant, and the floor plan of the tanning salon and the lease area for the business is attached to your staff report as well. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving Conditional Use Permit Number 2024 dash 01 to allow the microblading permanent makeup services and tattooing within the existing lease area of the existing unit in a commercial building at 303 Gardner Field Road, Suite B. And this project is exempt from CEQA per Section 15301 of the CEQA Guidelines. Just keep in mind for the motion I'm looking for, you'll need to recite items two and three listed on the recommendation. Before we open the public hearing, I'm available for any questions you may have regarding this application.
I have a question. How long have you been doing this?
Well, right now it's just for me.
Oh, sorry.
If there's no questions for me, then.
Then we'll open the. Any questions, Mark? If there's no questions, Mark, we're going to open the public hearing. And if there's anybody who wishes to speak, then please come forward. And if you are willing to answer some questions, that would be a good deal.
Hello, I'm Leslie Tostado. Do you guys have any questions or?
Yeah, I was asking, how long you been doing this?
So I started a little bit before the COVID pandemic happened. So I started taking classes late 2019. Then the pandemic happened, so I was just at home doing things like on fake skin and then also with my mentor, doing everything online. Since then, I've been doing it for about four years.
Can we see some of your artwork?
Can we show your foot?
Ah, yes.
That's my sister.
If you practice on this family first, it's perfect.
Like in person, too. You guys wouldn't mind.
No, I don't mind.
Just start right there and try.
And also, is anyone else going to be doing it? You got employees?
No, just myself. Yeah.
Good. Very nice.
Oh, yeah, and then just like the little dainty finger ones. Yeah.
Very nice.
So that's an example. But yes. Sorry, was there anything else to your question? I forgot.
No, no.
Okay.
Impressive.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, I have none either, so let's close the public hearing. Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded it.
Okay, which means you need to read the whole darn thing. Start with number two and go through three.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Taft Approving Conditional Use Permit Number 2024 dash 01 to Allow Leslie Tostado of Amor Alarte to Perform Microblading Permanent Makeup Services and Tattooing Within an Existing Lease Area of an Existing Unit in a Commercial Building Located on a 1.73 Acre Lot Within the General Commercial GC Zone District Located at 303 Gardner Field Road, Suite B. Find that the project is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, as set forth in Section 15301 of the CEQA Guidelines' existing facilities."
Seconded it.
Second from Mr. Orin, thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Orin?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schertz?
Yes.
Chairman Livingston?
Yes. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. I should have done that before the vote. Officially, it's done now. Let's move on to item number four, Public Hearing Regarding California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD Annual Progress Reporting for 2023. Mr. Staples.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Livingston. Before you is our annual housing element reporting that we have to do. As I went over pretty much all of last year in preparation of getting our next housing element updated, these housing elements cover an eight-year period. So we do these reportings the beginning of each year, and we have to get these through the Planning Commission, City Council, with public input where needed, and to the Housing Community Development Department of the State by April 1st. So the report, as you'll see, it's about 20 pages worth of attachments in the back, but the main ones are Table A2, which I had to work to make it a little more legible for you, but it lists the permits we identified for the 2023 calendar year, and the pages beyond. Table A2 goes across, I think, four pages because of the massive Excel spreadsheet table that the state provided. But one thing to go over, the permits issued since or the permits active in 2023, there's five listed. One was actually one unintentionally left off in 2022, which was actually the conversion of a rear storage unit area on Center Street, of a Center Street business into a residential unit. It was a simple one-bedroom kind of thing. So that's the first one listed. Then there are two ADU units permitted, a residential unit, which is actually the one that I think everybody sees next to the Chase Bank, that former off, once was a residential, became an office, now it's going back to residential. They still have an incomplete ADU unit that's attached on the backside. So if you notice the backyard, you'll see that that's still active, and I split that up because of how the reporting works. There's no way to come, it's a one permit, but there's no way to say single-family and ADU on how the spreadsheet works. So that's, one permit shows twice, and then there's a new house under construction on South 8th Street near the city boundary with South Taft. So that makes up the five you see listed there that we're reporting to the state. Outside of that, the Table D, I believe, a couple pages after that, lists all the programs that we're working on over the eight years. Majority of that is what you may call complete. There's a number of ordinance amendments that we did over the eight years and other changes to the general plan when that was still kind of in limbo and finalizing that document back in 2017. So we're kind of rounding out the last year, this 2023 year, this eight-year, eight-plus year document, because they transitioned from a five-year to an eight-year, and we're actually, I think, reporting 10 years technically, if you look at the one table that sums up. But the good part is, we, at least I consider a good thing, is that we permitted 74 units over primarily the eight years, because the first couple years, which was 2013 and 14, was kind of the transition area, and we actually didn't issue any, or we issued one permit for a house during that time, but when the Sandy Creek Estates got going and then the homes on Sunset and Pilgrim from Freedom Homes finished that off from pre-recession start, is the majority of that, and finishing up Amber Street down on the south part of the city, got us to that 74 units. So the state was expecting 254, but 74 is pretty consistent for the city, you know, 10-ish, 12-ish units a year, some much higher, some lower, year to year is kind of consistent for us, despite whatever the state expects us to build. So this is our last reporting year for this cycle. We'll start a new round with 2024, especially when we wrap up the new housing element that will set what we need to report on for the next go-around. But I'll end my comments there, but this is our typical beginning of the year reporting for our activity of the prior year of issuing and finaling permits for new housing in the city.
And then once this is approved by us, it goes to the City Council?
Yeah, same thing. You can open the public hearing. There's no resolution or other document action item. The motion is more to recommend that we move this on to the City Council for their review and acceptance, and that their action will be that it's directing me to send this to the state, which is now all digital. This spreadsheet uploads into a reporting system they have, and it populates everything and takes care of the whole typing thing after this is filled out, and it's all.
Sounds good.
Yeah. So I'm available for any questions you may have about anything in the document and the units that we've reported on.
Do you have any questions for Mark before we leave the public hearing?
Good job.
No. Okay. In that case, we're going to open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this item may do so. Now, with no one appearing to speak, we will now close the public hearing. And I will need a motion in a second.
Motion.
And this time it's just, I think, just the motion number two and three as usual, right?
All right, motion.
If you're going to say it, you got to read it.
Two and three?
Yeah.
Yes.
Got it. Oh, good, shorter this time, yes. Take a public hearing and receive public comments. A motion to recommend the City Council accept the annual housing element progress report of 2023 calendar year. Find that the progress, project in, exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality, Air Quality Act, Air Quality Act, CEQA, and set forth in Section 15061B3 of the CEQA Guidelines. How's that?
That's fine. Any, you got a second for Mr. Dowden? And we will need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Orin?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Schertz?
Yes.
Chairman Livingston?
Yes. Okay, 5:00 to that. We will be now moving on to our Planning Director Report.
Thank you, Chairman Orin, and I'll be taking this housing element report probably to the first meeting in March for the council, and once they approve it, we'll be sending it off to the state later that week, that first week of March. For my Planning Director's Report, I'll just follow up on what the Assistant City Manager filled in for me last month. He mentioned how we, the Tuesday night before, the council approved the agreement with the consultant that we have onboard. They're a lot closer. They're Precision Civil Engineering out of Fresno. Their business name, or, you know, their company name doesn't sound like they're a planning firm, but they do have a planning arm. I think they've been gathering the best Fresno-area planning talent they can to have that in addition to their engineering services. We've had a few kickoff meetings. I think the statement that I provided to our Assistant City Manager mentioned that we were going to move pretty quick. Thankfully, we've had some response back that we don't have to move quite as quick because it felt like we had a hard-to-fast date of the end of April to complete everything. But because there's certain, our current housing element and other housing element-related stuff, like the reporting we just did, is, we're in such compliance that we're not held to that April 30th date. We can't drag it on much further, but, because I think I also included that we may have some of our workshops that I've been telling you is upcoming sometime this month. It might push into early March. We'll do what we can to avoid the Easter break, whenever that is this year and all that, make sure it's calendar-friendly for everybody to get as much input as we can and people out to the meetings. You all are welcome, but try not to provide input just so there's no ethical concern there of, you know, because your review and action is here. So, but it looks like we got a good consultant onboard for this. They're jumping in with both feet. They're going to start calling around for holding some stakeholder interviews with folks around here, but it'll be more, less of the electeds and more of different groups, like they're going to reach out to the TIL program, you know, housing needs for, the special needs persons there, the ARC for physically handicapped folks, things like that that need to be addressed or covered in the element as well. So we're getting going. I have a meeting with them tomorrow, pretty much meeting every Thursday to just keep this on track and keep moving quickly with this to not be too late with submitting it in. But I think we're, we got a good group and just be ready that I'll be giving summary updates probably March and April, and we're probably moving to approve either May or June, so be ready.
Anybody have any questions for their Planning Director?
I do not.
No.
Okay, well, then we will move on to City Attorney Statements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, nothing to add.
And now Commissioner Comments. Anybody have any comments they'd like to share? It's time to do it.
Can you tell me a little bit more about your place and when you plan an opening and how can we help promote you?
Do you want me to go through?
Sure, come on.
Okay. So I still have to turn just the paper in for the zoning approval?
Yeah.
Into the Department of Health. I have everything already done with them. I also have a fictitious name done, so I just have to submit everything, get my room set up. They come do the inspection. As soon as they give me the thumbs up, I can start anytime.
All right.
So once I get that done, I'll start.
So if you want more free plugs, please come back and see us and sign for a public comment.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
I do, I do want to say with this weather that let's remember the poor in our town, which I think that Taft is very good at doing that. We have, we have several organizations that provide food to not just the homeless, but just people who are challenged with the rising prices. I actually volunteer on Tuesday nights down at Labor's of the Harvest, and I see what they're doing down there. It's a good work. It's a good, it's a, it's a good, it's a good thing that they're doing, that our community is doing that. I know that the Need Center is open on Monday and Friday mornings for the poor, for the seniors. Anybody that is, we all know going to the grocery store right now is a challenge with food prices increasing. This Taft First Assembly now is open two nights a month where they hand out food, and I know that there are places, even in Maricopa, different places in this community. And the interesting thing is with the model that some of the, the programs are establishing are that people come in and actually pick out the food that they know that their families will eat, instead of giving them a pre-prepared box of foods. Many times, half of that is, ends up in trash cans because there are things that either they don't have a place to prepare it or store it, or their family won't eat it. So now, I know at Labor's of the Harvest, when they come in, it's all set out. They have an area for the breads and canned foods, and then the area that I work in, they have meat, they have vegetables, fresh vegetables, fresh foods, dairy, and pastries. And so people go through and pick out what they want. Some people get as little as maybe 15 pounds of food, and some people get 70 pounds of food. They can fill up three big bags, and some of them bring very big bags. But I feel confident that the food is not going to waste, that it's actually going to their families. So I congratulate us as a community that we do consider the poor, that we do care, and it's very apparent by what we're doing. So in this rainy weather, let's, let's remember the poor.
Just a brief comment. Last night, they mentioned at the City Council meeting about a traffic fatality, cyclist, I think, somebody riding a bike out on the Gardner Field Road area. And while they were talking about how quickly it was discovered and dealt with, in rainy weather, I'm a cyclist, in rainy weather especially, it's almost impossible to see somebody on a bike. If you get enough rain going in the right direction, so if you're riding a bike, make sure you have on your reflective gear and your lights, everything like that. Try to be as visible as possible. You know, I think we have a pretty good traffic record here in the town, but there's still opportunities where things just can end up being an unfortunate accident if you don't put the effort into it. And I'm also guilty of, you know, shaking a fist at a car as it goes by, but we also have to, as cyclists, remember that we're not that visible. So we need to try and be more visible, especially in the weather we're having, and I think we're going to have it for a little while. So that's all I have.
Chairman Livingston could add one thing?
Yes.
I apologize. I thought I was going to have more documents in hand at this moment, but February 27th, so it's going to be before our next meeting, so I want to mention it now. Caltrans has been working with me. They want to do what they call a walk assessment along Highway 33, their Caltrans Highway. So it should be starting about 10:30 in the morning on that Tuesday, probably starting here at City Hall. We'll figure out how to bus or get folks up to, we'll probably start somewhere around Taco Bell, La Cima, the bank up in that area, and then work our way down 33. If we have a sizable enough group, we might split folks up where they look at 119 and whatnot, but it's walking as safely as we can, but probably not walking where there's no sidewalks. But it's more getting the folks in Caltrans out of Fresno down here to Taft so they can see it, and they want public assistance and feedback on some ideas they have. So if anybody can come and help be a part of that and respond to any questions they have about walking safety, biking safety, and speed through Kern Street, please come out Tuesday, February 27th. We'll probably start here around 10:30 to 11:00 at City Hall before going out there for about an hour or so, probably trying to walk our way down this way along the sidewalks that we do have on 33. And they really want our feedback here, not just the Planning Director and Public Works guys telling them how things are. So if you get, we'll get the flyer and information stuff out. I'll try to work with the city to get it on the Facebook page and maybe on the news, and definitely through the chamber for folks who have their email with them to know when all the Ford and museum and other events are going on in town. We'll get a flyer on that e-blast the next couple Tuesdays as well.
Okay, that sounds good. You know, it's funny, my mom and I were just talking about, of course, our favorite intersection, Kern and Adkinsen Way and all that. My thought, just as a general thought, is Caltrans has seemed to have gone roundabout mad, if there was a place to put a roundabout, that's it.
I've mentioned it to them because they're doing other 33. I've mentioned it to them because they're doing other 33, 119, just overall, big-picture project outlook-type things, and I've thrown that their way, but anybody who could repeat that if they agree with that, show up on that Tuesday.
Right over here at the...
Yeah, exactly. That wonderful place where all the accidents happen.
There was also Chevron healthcare offices and all that, yeah.
Yeah, that would be, if you can't, you're not going to be able to redesign the road any other way. You could maybe put in a stoplight, but that would even be a little tricky.
It would even worse.
Yeah, it probably would be, people run it. Whereas the circle does do one thing well, which is slow people down. So any other comments or thoughts for the day? If not, then we're going to move on to that item where you guys pick me to do the representation to the City Council.
It's a good idea.
Good idea. I like to mention that.
I think Dennis is eyeing it.
Okay.
I'll do, I'll help you out sometime, yeah.
Yeah, sometime. Every time I offer it to him, he's like, I'm not, I'm not ready yet. So we'll, I will go ahead and do that presentation this next City Council meeting. And with that, we just need a motion for adjournment.
A motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.